Guys, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Um, if we could all please, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. John Lee.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, we're gonna start with roll call. Troy Anderson, Padraig Bean.
Here.
Dwayne Bebo.
Here.
Eric Deauque.
Here.
John Fairchild.
Here.
Christopher Gaveway. Curry Jolker.
Present.
Jason Miller. David Trudeau.
Here.
Ozzy Comer.
Here.
Now, we are going to appoint a clerk pro temp for this meeting.
Motion.
Not, I have to say there are. Resolved that the Board of Education appoint John Fairchild as a clerk pro temp for this meeting. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Can I get a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Okay. Okay, resolved that the Superintendent of School recommends to the Board of Education to approve the agenda. Can I have a motion?
Dwayne.
Dwayne, second?
Curry.
Curry? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Resolved that the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person or persons. In a motion? That's Curry, second? Dwayne? Any discussion? And, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, we're going to go into executive session. Any idea how long we might be out, or?
Less than ten minutes, I would.
Okay, then we'll be back.
And Padraig is going to join the executive session.
Okay. Need a motion to, uh, for the Board to return to regular session?
Motion.
That's David, second? Eric? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, so we're back in a regular session at six twenty-six. Okay. And now I'm gonna turn it over to our Superintendent, Mr. Relation.
All right. So, tonight, we're going to honor one of our staff members who is retiring from Beatty Town Central. So, I'm gonna ask that Roland RJ Benwer come down, please. We give this to you for now, and read a couple of words that I got from some people who work with you.
While I stand here?
While you stand here. Okay, so, I asked for a little bit of your top experience background, but this is what I got. So, he's been with us for about twelve years, originally a fifth grade teacher, and then he transitioned down to pre-k, which we had a little uncertainty about, is what I hear. However, he embraced the role and really dove in and loved working with our youngest learners. And that you're known for your kind, caring, patriotic approach, and you have become a beloved pre-k teacher. And then, you're also known for your sense of humor and school spirit. So, story, apparently every year, you would basically hide yourself from other students in class as an extra student for the year. And apparently last year, you posed as an individual named Brock Lee, and were eating broccoli in the photo. It's absolutely love. You're a proud Buffalo Bills fan, and you have history of teaching the kids the champs, correct? Uh, and then outside of school, you enjoy commuting, motorcycle, sending all the time. Very thank you for all of your service to our district, we really appreciate it.
And you get to continue with reports.
Okay. Find the rest of my paperwork here. So, first on my list of report items is, just to let the Board know, the T-shirts that I had said, talked about last time for Board Recognition Week are here, so they're in front of you. Um, please enjoy them, wear them at future events, we look forward to seeing you sporting them. Um, so that's just a follow-up to the Board recognition. Next, cellphone coverage. Uh, this past week, because we did change our board meeting date, I was able to attend the Beatty Town Volunteer Fire Department Commissioners Meeting, talk to them about the cellphone coverage concerns that we have here on campus. They are going to be part of that joint letter with us, the town, and now them, to express our concerns over a lack of coverage in this area, um, that we will send to Verizon, and then include our local leaders in as well to try to advocate for a way to correct that. So, I'm happy to report, we've got three, three organizations now coming together to work on that, which is really good. So, that letter should be drafted in the next couple of weeks. I want each organization to be able to look at it, make sure it meets with their expectations, and then we'll be sending that in. So, making progress there, um, and having the local officials say that they want to be included in that so they can advocate on their end is gonna be very helpful for us. Strategic plan update, just very quickly. Parent Guardian Survey went live on Tuesday. Um, it'll be open for two weeks. We held a community forum last Wednesday, um, and then at the conclusion of our parent guardian surveys, that is when Alabrevé will be able to pull all of the data from staff surveys, student surveys, all of the plans and documents they wanted us to submit to them, um, as well as the community forum feedback, to develop their draft of basically the next phase. So, here's everything they collected, here's all the information they have. Now, our committee will take that and say, what do we do with all of this information? So, that's coming up. By the end of December, we should have that, that document available. Restorative practices, so I shared with the Board in my Friday update, an overview of restorative practices, basically an executive summary, after working very carefully and consciously with all of the building principles. I appreciate everything they did to provide me with information. So, I'd just like to hit a couple real high-level pieces from that report, so that way it's reported out to the public as well. You all have the report, but I wanna make sure that everyone else hears it as well. So, you know, across all of our buildings, elementary, middle, and high school, there is a lot of stuff happening, um, that is really moving in a positive direction. At the high school level, for example, we're focusing on re-engagement, counseling service, social emotional programs, such as the Seven Mindsets curriculum. Um, we have re-entry meetings, peer mediation, partnership with Champlain Valley Family Center. Um, our strong partnership with BHSN, um, and then we have some targeted programs like Reality Check, in-depth not tobacco, not on tobacco, not a number, Ready for Real. Um, we have individual and group counseling. So, those are some of the pieces that we've been working on at the high school level. At the middle school level, really focused on implementing circles, both community building circles and restorative circles, uh, re-entry meetings as well, PBIS expectations, um, implementation of reflective room and reflection sheets, students can reflect on their, kind of their impact of something that they did. Um, and then professional development's been a real focus in the middle school as well. Starting in 2021 with a book study on hacking school discipline. Um, 22, 23, we have Sweethearts and Heroes here. Uh, 23, 24, a restorative practices committee was created, um, receiving training through NICE Ed, and that's actually continuing into this year as well, because now we're moving into the next phase with NICE Ed, the New York State Department of Education, which is basically a coaching model that is being done at the middle school and also at the elementary schools as well, because we had committees there. So, that's a real powerful move forward for us, um, getting that support directly from the state, which we think is very valuable. And another book study is happening this year as well at the middle school, called Hacking School Discipline Together, um, which is being done in conjunction with the faculty at faculty meetings. At the elementary levels, again, that's where you're focusing on community building, um, proactive student reflection, and again, ongoing professional development. Um, we've got individual conferences with students, the importance of reflection, meeting between students and their peers, teacher-student meetings, um, again, community building circles and restorative circles. Think sheets are used with our youngest learners as well, to kind of process, you know, what their behavior and how it may have impacted others. Um, I was covering one day, I actually sat with a student and did the think sheet. It was very interesting to watch this child process how their behavior impacted others. Um, I was impressed. This child knew, looking at the faces and saying, you know, happy, angry, sad, how other students felt based on their behavior. Um, so that was, that was really interesting to see that reflective approach. At the elementary level, in terms of professional development, again, that NICE Ed coaching model. Um, and then at both BES and CHES, they're participating in a book study of restorative discipline practices, a journey in implementing, or implementation by a community of Texas educators. So, there's a lot of really good work happening. I'm excited to be able to work with the administrators. This summary is very nice, feel to say, okay, what's our next step? What do we wanna do next? We talked about this back in July with our code of conduct and some of the language changes. This helps say where we're at right now and what steps we're taking to continue to move forward. Um, restorative practices to really implement, it's a three-to-five-year process to really push that forward across the board. So, we're already making some strides. I'm excited to see that kind of move forward into the future. Uh, next, I do wanna just mention, at the last board meeting, there was a request for some data, um, and information related to student behaviors. I am working on that, I've pulled some resources together, but just like everything else that the Board has seen me do, I like to make sure I have all the information together in a document that's easy for you to access, so I am still working on that, but I didn't want you to think that I had forgotten. Uh, a couple more things, I promise I'll go quick. Lockdown drill, we did our first lockdown drill with our new system on Monday, November fourth. Um, and we did another one, uh, just two days ago on Wednes, or yesterday, on Wednesday. Um, I did have the administrators update how the lockdown drills were, were done. Um, previously, we weren't keying into the rooms, and I felt that was a really important part of the drill. So, we updated that, our staff were very flexible, I appreciate it, because it was the first time we operated a drill in that way. Um, we received feedback, we did a survey after that first drill, um, received feedback, and actually implemented some of that feedback at the drill yesterday. So, that was a really reflective process for us, um, and I am participating in that as well. Without an associate principal at Cumberland Head, I've been over helping out Mrs. Stowenger. So, it's been good to be part of the process to see how that's working. Um, last thing, just student programming overall, there's a lot of really cool things going on, and I'm gonna say right up front, I'm absolutely going to have forgotten something in this, but I wanna highlight a couple of big pieces. So, you know, for fall, fall athletics, um, we have four teams secured sectional championships. Three teams are currently participating in regional play. Volleyball team actually won last night, our football team, uh, plays tomorrow night, and boys cross-country will play on Saturday, or compete on Saturday. And I believe volleyball also will play on Saturday as well, I just don't have information on that yet. Model UN, on October twenty-fourth, we hosted over two hundred students from area districts on our campus for a Model UN event here. Um, as a history teacher, I can't tell you how much I enjoy coming in and sitting in and watching that. Our kids did an amazing job, they represented us very, very well, we should be very proud of the work. And all of the staff who helped facilitate that program. It's not easy to have two hundred extra kids on campus, so from food service to, you know, our custodial staff, to our administrators, that's a big undertaking, um, so I was very impressed.
Can I share with you, one of the schools that attended was Boquette Valley, the school I work at, and the teacher that was there and the students came back speaking about the kids here in the program. And the fact that you were there in Model UN for a while, so.
I was formerly in Model UN, so for me, it's like, this is a chance for me to kind of go back and relive my past. It was so much fun, and just to see the kids be so engaged in these real-world issues. Um, I could talk about it all night, but I won't. Uh, and lastly, um, I had the privilege of kicking off the 2024 mega concert on November fifth. I didn't know what I was getting into when I said, yes, I will kick off this concert, I didn't know what a mega concert looked like. I can't believe the amount of effort and time that our music department put into organizing that and orchestrating something that was so smooth and in transition so easily. I know the administrators were part of that process as well, and then the students themselves. To be able to perform and then sit quietly while the next group performed, that was unbelievable to me, in, in such a large space. So, again, I know I'm missing other things, those are three big pieces that I just wanted to kind of bring forward for attention, because there are so many great things that are happening here in the district that as we enter the holiday season, we need to be mindful of and kind of celebrate. It's a lot of really good stuff.
Those music people are definitely special and very dedicated.
Unbelievable.
Yeah.
That's my report?
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Parliament, Business Manager, report.
I don't have much. Uh, I think here, uh, on the agenda is the tax collector report. Um, for those of you that are new, um, this report is what we call unpaid taxes. So, we, myself and Jackie Baloo, who collects over at Plasper's, we calculate everything that has not been paid yet, which means second, third installments, and then anybody that hasn't paid anything. And then send that to the county, and the county makes us whole. Um, so, that million dollars that you're gonna see in, um, to vote on tonight is the million dollars that the county will pay us to make us whole. And now, and then they take over collecting the money on their, on our behalf. Um, it is a little bit higher than where we were at last year. Last year, we, unpaid, we're at nine hundred and seventy-three thousand, and we're a little over a million dollars this year. So, we're about eighty-six thousand dollars more. I'd just like to give you guys that as a comparison, so you guys can tell where we are.
John?
Yeah?
Given the increase in tax rates, that's actually probably a lower percentage of people that didn't pay this year, I would think?
Our rates actually went up.
Yeah, but with the assessment going up.
Some assessments went up.
So, for some people, there was a significant increase in the amount they had to pay.
Yes.
So, I think that increase, we actually had a decrease in number of people.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, so I, I mean, this is pretty typical, it's not anything, um, out of the ordinary. Uh, so that's in your agenda today. Um, and then the budget calendar is in our, we're starting that already. It seems like we just finished, but we're starting it again. So, um, you'll be hearing a lot about that going forward. I've already given the administrators a heads up that our next ATM meeting will be going over wants and needs, and we'll be starting to craft the beginning portions of our budget. And Mr. Relation and I have already had a couple meetings on it as well, so it's that time of year again.
I've expressed my wants and needs already.
So, um, that's what I have.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to building principles, Mr. Mizial from the high school?
Good evening, everybody. Um, just gonna start off, I don't know if anybody's been checking out the Facebook videos, uh, so it kind of gives you a weekly update of all different events that go along with building each week, so you know the week.
I like.
If I have a great.
I was gonna say, I, I wanted to mention to you, and I meant to, when the next thing you spoke, I do appreciate that a lot. And I think it's a great way to get information out there, that is just, here's what's going on. And it's very nice to see.
Yeah, it's good, we get a lot of hits, sometimes parents learn things don't get, get a lot of traction, so I figure we'll try a different avenue, just kind of showcasing all the wonderful things to do along in a week, pretty, some are four to five minutes long, I know they're a little long, but it does show all the great things that our faculty puts in, our staff, our PTA, uh, our support staff, you know, everybody. Um, gonna try to highlight those different things for the week ahead, and it's going pretty well. And I guess check it out if you haven't, I have been working with Jess Collier too, our reading specialist, who's CPS. Um, and she's gonna start putting it out on Instagram and some different other avenues too, to get it out there. So, uh, some of the things I kind of have mentioned on there, were just kind of updates, I kind of run out some different things. We might, you might have heard this already, but one of the things we disclosed up this week was, uh, first quarter was last Friday. Uh, in a perspective, we had a hundred students with high honor roll with distinction, that means they scored ninety-five or higher as a GPA. Uh, a hundred students had that in high school. A hundred and fifty-three students had higher roll, which is an average of nine-year higher for the quarter. And another hundred and fourteen students had honor roll, paid five or higher for a GPA. So, that's three hundred and sixty-seven students in the high school who obtained some type of honor roll. Uh, just to put that perspective, that's seven out of every ten students in the high school received honor roll, uh, this past quarter. So, that's pretty impressive, uh, when you look at the holistic view of a whole high school, six hundred, you know, so just under six hundred students. So, again, that's everybody coming together, faculty, staff, all the interventions that are being used in place, being like and all restored, right? And it doesn't get to that point without restorative practices, it doesn't work to that point where people aren't dedicated to helping kids do really well. Another piece that we've been working on is, uh, maybe twenty-five students participating in Ready for Real programming. So, what that basically is, is we partner with Ready for Real, uh, they have paid internships, uh, and they have work experience uh, based on their interests. So, they get to go out to a lot of, they get to go down to the all that area, you know, this part, they've done a really good job. BES had some kids go down there and work as aides and work in, in education. We have ones that go to the strand and want to be actors. We had, you know, uh, some pretty cool opportunities to get our kids out there in the field. Uh, and they're being paid for that through our Ready for Real program. Uh, so, the really cool, uh, initiative that we put in a couple of years ago, and it just keeps building. Uh, they also take the work ready credential at the end, so we did, in that program, we'll have the work ready credential coming out of that. Uh, again, the true goal for you all in high school is everybody's marketable. They come out of high school with some type of trade, some type of way to get them a job. Uh, so that's another way that we're doing that, uh, as twenty-five kids, we're doing that next twenty-five, the second half of the year too as well, uh, to get more involved. Um, last thing I have for you is kind of the cool thing, uh, we guess, uh, through AP, we receive the silver honor roll recipient, uh, for advanced placements. What that basically means is that AP honor roll recognizes schools, the AP programs are delivering wide, wide rating results. Uh, and we were one of those schools. If you look it up, we're the only school in this whole area that met this fee. Uh, so there's different categories, there's, there, you know, gold, silver, bronze, we're in the middle right now. What that basically means is that forty percent or more of the graduating cohort from last year took at least one AP exam. It also means that twenty-five percent of the students graduating from cohorts who were three or higher on one of those exams. And then, uh, two percent or more, uh, took five AP exams, uh, and scoring at least three had one of those exams. So, what that's showing us is that we have a lot of students taking AP exam and having opportunities. If we're elite in this area, we're providing those opportunities for our kids. Again, this year, we have two hundred and ten kids signed up to take AP exams in May. Uh, registration actually closes tomorrow, uh, so that's a pretty cool fee. Again, it takes our, it takes everybody, it takes our AP teacher to go to trainees, it takes our kids being prepared. Uh, there's a lot of work that goes into those exams, making sure they're administered, make sure they're administered correctly. Uh, but that's pretty cool to see. Like I said, if you look it up, it's a nationwide result, there's only about a thousand schools that get that recognition, uh, in the nation. So, we're in the world, we're seeing everyone now, so that's pretty cool to have that fee. That's all I have for you guys tonight, are there any questions, anyway?
How are, how are we doing with the, now that we're well into the school year? Has the, um, ease of the cellphone policy got away a little bit? Is there more problems with that? I'm curious.
I, I mean, I think it's, it's a day and a, I'll take forever, right? We're, we're still pulling this wrong. I, you know, I, we're not having a ton of, of issues with it, you know? We have a couple here and there to get attention and things like that, but overall, it's been really good, it's been very consistent. Uh, again, that's that consistency, it's, it's making sure everybody's on the same page, you know, across the building. And kids are conforming really well to it, they understand that there's a consequence, it shouldn't be out. Uh, they understand admin is right on it, and I wanna thank our admin team, because that has been a huge, huge undertaking, uh, to make sure that we get, if any, if any cellphones out, we go to classroom, we get the teacher, we get the student, we bring the student in, we make the phone call right then and there, we assign the consequences to that student right then and there. Uh, so that's been working really well. Uh, you know, so I think it's, it's a huge feat for us, I think, you know, all the administrators are gonna try to learn from what we did.
Thank you.
Yep. Any else? Thank you.
And now, Ms. Stowenger from Cumberland Head.
Good evening, everybody. I'm a few weeks down at Cumberland Head, we wrapped up ours in the last book fair last, the last week of October. As always, the book fair was very popular. Mrs. Bishop and Mr. Rivera organized a held book fair, which was in our library. Students were ready to shop during library class and during their free time. A total of one thousand three hundred fifty-nine items were sold, and two thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-two cents was earned to buy more resources for the library, which is wonderful. We are happy to announce that we are partnering with the PTO to offer our students Bus Driver of the Week awards. Each Friday, the bus drivers choose one bus driver to receive a positive recognition for outstanding bus behavior. The driver presents the students with a certificate, and then the winners receive a coupon for the cafeteria for either free chips or ice cream, and they get their name, um, over the laptop speaker every, on Friday mornings. That's been a way to help us encourage positive behavior at the school bus, which isn't always easy to do. Um, Mr. Relation already talked about a book study that's going on at Cumberland Head. Um, we're two sessions in, we have three more sessions to go. We have a number of resources shared with each other, and we look forward to future implementation. But as Mr. Relation said, we're heading in the right direction. Um, I'm happy to say that we were able to send three of our convention teachers, Madison Brunel, Bridget Hart, and Jess Worster, to the New York State Reading Association Conference in Albany. They just returned on Tuesday, they sent me pictures from the conference, and they're very excited to share with me what they learned. Um, a lot of it, a lot of what they learned focuses on the science of reading, and again, it's another initiative that we are undertaking. And last, we have parent-teacher conferences coming up on November twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. All parents will be given the opportunity to come in with our tribe of teachers to review the progress, areas of strength, and areas in need of improvement. I'd like to thank my faculty for being so flexible with their scheduling, that flexibility ensures that all families have a chance to attend in person, and we look forward to having all of our families in the building. Any questions?
Thank you. And our student board member, Ozzy Comer.
Um, so, I'll start with, um, I have the middle school and the elementary for Beatty Towns this, um, session. And starting with the elementary, I was able to meet with a few students over the course of mine. Um, the rest of my student council was a huge help with this, especially Logan Strickland, he got me in contact with, uh, his siblings who go, both go there, and his mom who works at, uh, BES. So, they're a huge help in getting a lot of this info. First and foremost, they talked about some of the events that have taken place. Um, the first thing they talked about was the food drive that's currently going on at the elementary school, uh, which is a lot of students, teachers, community members really just gathering food, um, donating it, uh, which I was told is going to be sent over, I'm pretty sure this week, to the, uh, Book Fair Hall. Um, so, it'll be in time for Thanksgiving, and a lot of families in the community will be helped, especially like when they may need it for Thanksgiving. Um, so they thought that was really cool, they're very, very excited about that. Um, along with that, the students talked about, um, the Halloween parade that happened, uh, which, uh, was K through fourth grade, and parents were also able to watch. Um, the two students I talked to were very excited about it. Uh, one of them worked for like a few weeks on their costume, so they were really happy that they got to participate in that. Uh, it's something they really looked forward to. Um, along with that, they talked about some of the other community events that happened. One thing was the family book fair that happened, where families were able to go in, buy books. The, it's the same book fair that happened at, at Cumberland Head, um, I'm pretty sure. I, the information isn't exact, but they were really excited to do that, they bought, um, like five books. Um, and they told me they already read like three of them, so I guess they're gonna have to buy a few more, but, um, they were really excited about that, they got to do that with their family. Along with that, the, um, there was a fall festival, which was put on by a lot of the staff at the elementary school, and a lot of the parents and students were able to go in. Um, I know the high school also helped out with this a little bit with them, and NHS, a lot of volunteers were organized to help out with that. So, it was really a community event that was put on by staff at the school, students, and, um, community members to like really bring together that sense of community at the school. Um, so they were really excited about that, especially, um, the teacher that I was able to talk to really enjoyed that event. And they thought it was really good for the school and the students. And for the middle school, I was able to meet with the parity of their middle school, uh, student council, Rosalyn, Charlotte, Addison, and Lexi. Um, they told me about a lot of awesome stuff that's been happening at the middle school this year, uh, so far. Um, the first thing they told me about was a lot of the fun field trips they've been having, uh, the students have been participating. And, um, a lot of students are enjoying learning in new environments and having those opportunities, um, the cool experiences that come along with that. Uh, so they were really excited about that. Another thing they pointed about, uh, pointed out was some of the, um, events that have happened, put on by the students and some staff throughout the year. Uh, they spoke about spirit weeks that happened, one happened just a few weeks back. And they also talked about, um, the two dances that have already happened, uh, thus far this year. The sixth grade put on a Halloween dance, and the student council put on a, um, homecoming dance. Um, they were very excited that they could do, do the, these dances, these events. Uh, it's really how the school comes together. Another thing, well, we, they focused a lot on the charity and a lot of the events with charity that they've been doing as of recent. Um, the, they were all very prideful, uh, that I put, they were all very excited that they were able to raise so much for breast cancer awareness. Uh, they did a lot of events, uh, they sold bracelets, had a boys', um, soccer, like modified pink game. Uh, had a lot of donations come in and did a penny wars in the real school, uh, between the grades. And, uh, overall, uh, they, uh, the numbers were given to me by some of the students, uh, especially Addison Rankin, she helped me a lot with this. They raised over three thousand dollars for a really important cause that a lot of them care a lot about. So, they were very proud that they were able to participate in that, and they really came together as a school, um, and as a student body to raise this amount, um, for a really important cause. And on one final note, or on another note, uh, they talked about the, um, a cool thing that's happening in the advisories. Last month is the sixth grade that did it, right now is the second grade that's doing. Right now, it's the second grade that's doing it. It's basically like a challenge competition thing that was, that was like, it's called like eagle soar or something. It's like a game that they get to play. And they were all very excited. The seventh graders are mostly what make up student council and they're really excited to play it. And the sixth graders that I was able to talk to thought it was really fun. So, it's a way that the, the students and the advisories can cheer each other on, kind of make that sense of community while having fun and using that kind of, more wise way than just sitting around doing nothing. So, they were really excited to be able to do that. And on one final note, the attendance challenges that started last year have continued this year. The first one had an attendance challenge between the grades and whichever grade had the best attendance got a movie. The eighth grade won that with like a pretty, I don't remember the exact number, but it was a pretty amazing attendance, which is really good to see after the last few years of attendance being less than what it could be. So, it's been a really good improvement having these challenges. They got to watch a movie on the day of the pep rally. They'd spent a portion of the first half of the day watching the movie as a class. And this month, there's another challenge going on, but instead between grades, it's as a school as a whole. And every day that they reach a certain attendance number, like a goal, they, that's another teacher that they get to pie in the face at the end of the month. So, the students were obviously very excited for that. And it's really boosting attendance in the middle school overall and kind of setting that precedent. That's all I have, but it was, I really appreciate, we have a team now that's really getting a lot of students' opinions and the excitement is very, very felt by our team. So, it's a really exciting time for not only the high school, but the middle school, elementary as well.
Any questions? Thank you.
Do you just get to pick the teachers for the pie?
I'm not sure, but it'd be, that'd be pretty awesome. If that's not the case.
Probably get more comments. Probably.
You're super intentional. I, listen, I didn't want to take, but I have no problem doing that. So, you can put me into the, I would love to be a part of it. I have done it before when I was in the classroom. It's okay.
Oh, wait a minute. We haven't missed any hornbeats, so that we get to throw a poll.
Is that how we're going to do it? I absolutely will, I will participate in that.
Okay.
Thanks, Al.
Okay, moving on to committee reports. And I'd ask Mr. Parham to do the audit committee report.
Yeah, there's, there really wasn't a lot. We did August and September. Pretty quiet months. We went over all the grants, the switch over of grants because the year, fiscal years are all different. So, come September, I think we're all into the new grants for the, for the new year. What else? Cafeteria, there wasn't much for cafeteria. I mean, it was just everything was status quo. August is a really quiet month and then now it starts to ramp up a little bit with September. And then we are planning to do our next meeting January 2nd and when we'll do October and November. So, unless, Eric, do you have anything else on that?
Just that we're witnessing similar trends in the cafeteria from last year to this year. You know, everything's trending pretty much the same, so there's really not any significant changes that we've witnessed or seen.
Actually, our summer program was a little, did a little better this year than it did last year for food service, so that was good.
Always good when there's extra money. Okay, thank you. Safety committee. Speaking for the safety committee.
Yeah, I know Eric was there, but Eric.
Yeah, let me find my papers here.
Okay. I've got some notes too.
So, there was a lot of discussion regarding plus move and drop off protocol. And I believe there also was an issue with some of the entrances that there, there's four entrances open in the morning. So, we kind of tabled it for the time being to develop some more ideas and figure out how we can approach making that better so we can manage the entries. What's we have on here? I think that was following up to the door security protocol that you had mentioned in the email last week.
Yes.
Some of that was also discussed at that safety meeting. I don't know, do you want to touch about like the PA system?
Sure. Yeah, so I also, we did have Director Pepe to talk about the milox boxes and adding a few more. So, we're trying to make sure that we have those milox boxes in every location. There's an AD across the building, so that's going to be on the list of budget items. They're not overly expensive, but we do want to make sure that if there's an AD, there's also a milox box that's present as well. So, we did mention that at this committee as well. You know, and then the parking pieces, we are looking at some options there. We have some communications we're developing in terms of traffic flow, those pieces. So, that's, that's in the works at this point in time. I did send an email out to all of our staff just about the importance of making sure doors are not propped open. When you come through a door, it takes two seconds to make sure that door is fully pulled behind you and then push on it just to make sure, you know, we're getting into that season of frost where it, that little bit of movement could make a change for a door. So, we just, it's everyone's job to do this and it doesn't take that much extra time. I was actually, the other day, someone noticed like, why do you always pull the door? I'm like, because I want to make sure it's shut. And then I push on the door and I just, I want that to be part of our culture here. It's important. That's the easiest and most effective way for us to make sure that our campus is secure at all times. Also, as part of that, our new, as we're coming online, you know, Eric kind of said this, the safety and security system updates. So, our PA system is now fully operational. We have been able to tie in the bolt lights, we call them, the ones that have the three-colored light. Those are being tied in. Our video camera system's being rolled over to the new Vigilon system. The visitor management system, that is coming online. BES is our test site for it. So, we've actually communicated with parents. You can, you can actually sign up that you're coming in for something ahead of time and you have a QR code right on your phone. So, when you get there, it stands at, your badge prints automatically. So, it saves us some time when we have those events to have to have people wait in line and present their ID. They can actually do that in advance. So, that's going to be a huge piece coming on board. You know, Gary Lambert's not here tonight, but he is the one who has really kind of focused on some of those pieces. In addition, you know, Jen with the PA system, that's part of, you know, a capital improvement project. So, those are all the things that are coming online. There is some more pieces that we're still finessing and figuring out. Some of them are related to like the, the management system for like staff on their cell phone to know when things are happening. Those are coming online. You would know, I've heard of Raptor. We're moving to a new system. All of these systems integrate together into one platform, which is, that's why we did this. You know, if I'm understanding correctly, before I got here, it was, we've started working on one thing and said, well, we should add this. Jen, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this. And then it's like, why don't we put all the, these systems should all communicate and work together. One of these is the door system beyond just checking is that we are going to, we will have an automated system that if a door is left open, we will get an email saying, hey, this door is left open. So, we can immediately address that, which will be a nice feature for us as well. And then we did have a couple items that were tabled for the next meeting. So, that's one thing we're working on. We talked about running everything through the building level safety committees first. So, that way, there's like a platform at the building level, try to work on it there. If it doesn't get addressed there, if it's a district level item, then it would come to the district committee, just so there's that whole chain of kind of progression of communication. So, it was a very, very good committee. We have a ton of people, a lot of really good feedback and good conversation, which is the most important thing.
Any questions? Okay, and Eric, I think, are you reporting for the operations committee? Didn't talk about this one. Okay, okay.
Dwayne, do you want a policy? Oh, that's policy.
Tell me another boss, I see how it is.
Do you want, Jen and I can do operations.
Yeah, go ahead.
Jen, do you want to hit some of the big pieces?
Yeah, we went over the propane tanks. If you've noticed, they're doing some work out there. The tank is good. So, they're moving on and buttoning everything up and bringing it up to code. I'm hoping to have them out of here by the middle of December would be nice.
She's already extending the timeline they gave us, by the way.
Yes, because I don't trust them. But no, they're doing, they're doing very good work. I'm not, they've done, they've been very good to us. So, they're going to be finishing that up and we will be all up to code. We are, just so everybody is aware, we are going to be losing those handicap parking spaces that are there. So, the two that we created are going to remain, in the parking lot are going to remain the handicap parking spots.
So, we're not losing, you've just been put to a different location.
Right, well, we did lose those spaces, but we, we've, we've taken away from somewhere else.
Yes, we're not short handicap spots.
No, we're not short handicap spots, we're short regular spots now. So, yeah, so that, that is going on. I think that we done hopefully by the first week of December. So, we also went over the capital outlay, capital project. Capital project, we gave an overview of the third-party agreement to move this project along because we got bad news a few, well, I guess it was three weeks ago now, that we weren't going to be able to go out to bid this year, we're going to have to put the project off another year. But third-party review came out and we jumped on it literally that day to try and supersede SCD because the timeline was so long. It has worked. We are going to go out to bid in December. Everything is on track. There was a fee to that, but the fee is well worth that of the inflation that it would have cost us to push this out another year. So, we discussed all of those options that we're going to do. Capital outlay was just the VE doors, we were finishing up the VE doors. We're done, we're now completed that project for last year and we're moving to this year. Those bids should actually be, we're going to go out to bid in December for the doors for this year as well. So, everything's on track again, hoping to keep it on track. We have another operations committee meeting, I think we skipped November.
Yeah, correct.
Thank, so, right, December? December. So, we will have a lot to go over. We've got a lot of updates that we have and we'll bring them all to you guys next board meeting. Because it is before the next board meeting, correct?
I believe that's the way we scheduled it.
I, I think that's the way we scheduled it. So, yeah. So, it might be a long operations committee meeting, our next one. And I think, I think I covered everything, right?
Sounds good. Thank you. Policy committee.
So, policy committee, and again, we went over the policies that we had tabled last meeting. And when we went through these, this is just for first revision, we had a couple that we needed additional information on for clarification on wording that was coming from, to determine whether or not it was regulated by the state or not. And after the meeting, that information was able to get provided to us. So, by the time the next meeting goes, everything should be approved to go through the first review.
Okay. From the looks of tonight's meeting, you guys have been busy along the way. Okay. Time for public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to speak?
Evening, everybody. My name is Scott Cetera, I'm a sixth grade ELS teacher here. I'm also president of Beacon Town Teachers Association. We're hoping, we provide tonight some snacks for a board and administrative team. If you did not, were able to grab some on the way in, hopefully you could take some for breakfast tomorrow or snack later tonight. Seems to be plenty there. Purpose for me being here tonight, I would like to thank, BTA would like to thank you, say thank you to the board for your dedication to our school community. We appreciate the time you give and the focus you put on the growth of our district, especially in the role you had in hiring Dustin, who we feel can lead us in the right direction and pushing for the development of a strategic, a five-year strategic plan. We appreciate that. We'd also like to acknowledge our administrative team for their tireless devotion to our students and staff. Education is challenging, a lot more challenging when I first started teaching here. And in recent years, I've observed our admin team operating under some really tough circumstances and doing so both admirably and with a lot of sacrifice. And we really appreciate that and we'd like to thank you for that. Like to thank Jen Parham as well. She is outstanding at managing our finances. She is a multitasking master and we're grateful for all she does. And finally, last but not least, we'd like to say thanks to the real person running the show around here, as we all know, Chelsea. Thank you for your welcoming and kindness, it's much appreciated. So, just thank you very much. We're very grateful. Sometimes we don't show it as much as we should, but we're really grateful for all everybody does. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone want to follow that?
Well, he's right, I still don't know what I did to give him over.
I know.
We were going for balance. Okay, moving on. Resolve that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. Can I have a motion? Dwayne, second? Curry? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Resolve that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the CSE, CPSC, and 504 recommendations dated 11/14/24. Can I have a motion? David? Got in there just before your second? Curry? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Resolve that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations, appointments, unpaid leave of absence, and retirements be and are hereby approved. Motion? Dwayne? Second? David? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That was quiet. Opposed? Motion carries. I think we're now on miscellaneous items. Resolve that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolution on this consent agenda, MOA with BSSA, bus runs, fingerprinting, revised contract SRO, agreement between CFES and BCSD, MOA with BTA slash STEEP coordinator and 2025, 2026 budget calendar be and are hereby approved. Dwayne? Second? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, policies. Resolve that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following policies, the first four being first readings and the others are second readings and adoption tonight. Motion? Curry? Second? Dwayne? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolve that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, financial reports, transfers, donation, tax collectors' report, and TRS reserve be and are hereby approved. Motion? Still need a motion? Second? Now, it's a roll call vote. Is there any discussion prior to that?
Troy Anderson, Kadre Beane.
Yes.
Dwayne Bibo.
Yes.
Eric Daupuy.
Yes.
John Fairchild.
Yes.
Christopher Galloway. Curry Jowlerkirk.
Yes.
Jason Miller. David Trudeau.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, it looks like, what do we have next? We have additional items to discuss.
I just wanted to take a moment to share that at the end of October, I was able to attend the New York State School Boards Association Annual Conference of New York City. And first, I would like to thank the district for providing me with that opportunity. I found it to be a very valuable experience with this being my first year on the board. There was a lot of great information presented that is current and important to the district. For example, I attended sessions on artificial intelligence, on the new Titan Nine policies, on negotiations, on service animals. on negotiations, on service animals in schools, stuff like that. I would like to encourage though, the district to allocate some more funding so that we might be able to send a contingency of maybe three board members to that conference because while I was attending the negotiation session, there may have also been something on the policy that would have been very beneficial for someone on this board to attend, especially considering the decisions that we're making. So like I said, I found it extremely beneficial for my knowledge and furthering my, my, what I think my abilities to be here to serve on this board. I did share all of the information that I brought back with Dustin. And I, the nice thing was, you know, if, if you go on there, on the website for that and you see a session that they're still listed, you see a session that like, wow, I wish I could have attended that. Because I put the app on my phone, I can download any of the information from that still and get to you. So again, very valuable. Just wanted to put that out there.
And I think now would be the time or maybe the next meeting for the board to have further discussion about that if we want to try to make a priority for the board moving forward as we're heading into budget season. Because we don't want to spring it on you in March.
I'll put it on the, the launch. I got all this scrolling.
I have a couple things, Sean.
Sure.
Mrs. Barcom, is that clothing closet up and running for donations for the elementary? Because I have so much clothes to look for our kids.
Yeah, our faculty meeting this week, we talked about any donations for that. I have a flyer I can share with you if you want.
That would be great. I would really appreciate that.
Toothbrushes, toothpaste, anything like that.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for asking.
Could we take that flyer and put it on your news release that you do on Mondays?
Yeah, you can do that.
Just that way it would get out to more people.
Also, we had a salute to service football game that I mentioned last month that was coming up. They raised over $1,500 in basket, just in basket raffles. That money was all donated to our local North Country Veterans Association. So that was a great turnout. A lot of people were there. Lots of monies were raised. Also, sports teams, they're all playing well. Everybody, great to see. It's nice to see we have four teams competing in the regional play. And also something I think that goes unnoticed sometimes, our sports bus runs. They do a great job. Jen, Corey, Mr. Prichet, Terry Briat, that's a lot on them. And from coaching in the last 15 years up until this year, that was always not really ever a stressor for us because we knew those buses were gonna be there. So keep it up. That's a great job on everyone's part there. And there's pickups here and there, but when you're trying to have all your normal day bus runs plus get all your sports teams everywhere, that's a lot of work sometimes. And that's not unnoticed, at least on my end. I understand the work that's put into that. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, next is the second opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to speak this time? Okay. Do we have to do another clerk pro temp or we're just good because I'm already? Okay, so the board, we do need to vote to go into executive session. So. Well, let me read them. Does the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the employment of a particular individual? We gotta get the reason in there. Was that Curry that wanted to? Second? Let's give it to Eric. I heard him first.
Sure.
Okay. And this one will take a while, I'm told.
Yeah, and I don't.
No, we don't expect any action after returning from this. So thank you all for being here tonight. If you want to head out? The motion, oh yeah, we got, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.